Memory care, it's a single-story building. The residents will not drive. It'll have very minimal traffic impact on the community. It's going to be licensed for 40 beds. It's a very small building, one story again. And we think it's a great site for this. It's the entry to the homeowners area back there, to the golf course, adjacent to some medical, adjacent to some retail. And it certainly is a different type of project than what was previously submitted as multifamily apartments or condos. And we are just asking that you grant us this so we can move forward to construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you be available for us? Yep. Thank you. So this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on SE-03-17, now would be the time. Please state your name and that you have been sworn.
My name is Ian Millen, and I have been sworn. I'm the president of the Burnt Store Isles Association. And as you know, this property falls within our neighborhood. And for the past year, we've been listening to proposals from groups that want to develop that property, and most of those proposals have been met with harsh disapproval. Our members primarily are concerned with a high traffic volume through our neighborhood, also with architecture that is totally inconsistent with the architecture we already have in the neighborhood. So when Iris made their proposal to us in February, they were able to convince us that the traffic would impact would be minimal. And they invited our architectural committee to work closely with their design team and their landscape team to ensure that the memory care unit would more closely blend in with what we have in the neighborhood already. So the Iris proposal has been met with strong support from the association. We think it's a good use of the property. We think it's a good fit for BSI. The Board of Directors has already voted to make an exception to our deed restrictions to allow for the building of a commercial building there. And we would encourage the council to grant the special exception to allow Iris to go forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on SE-03-17? State your name and that you've been sworn, please.
My name is Bill Leach. I'm a resident of PGI. I'm going to shock you. I own a home which will be in sight of this proposed project. And given the scope of the project and the architectural design, I think it'd be an advantage to that particular neighborhood, and I personally would support it. I don't think it'll have an impact adversely on my investment in a patio home that I own on Alba Seat. So it's a pleasure to come here and say, I'd like to see this move forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please make your way. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chairman. I put my other hat on now as the Director of Department of Health. Department of Health looks at this as a...
State your name and that you've been sworn.
I'm Dr. Lapore, the Administrator for the Department of Health in Charlotte County. We recommend...
And you have been sworn?
I've been sworn. Yes, I have. I do recommend we stand behind this proposal because of two reasons. One is that there's a large need for our community for assisted living and nursing home facilities as we are always jockeying between first and second place with the senior population that we have. We don't have enough facilities in our county to address the issues of aging and the aging population that we have. This would be a great benefit because it is in our area. Punta Gorda Isles traditionally has been the oldest population in the area. As you all know, with the longer expanded lifespans that we have and medical care making all the advances that we have, that we're having additional issues, especially dealing with Alzheimer's and memory loss. And having a facility such as this would enhance our community overall, including the access to care, the health care equity, the social determinants of care that we have. So the Department of Health is behind this construction. We do recommend that we maintain the limited use scope, that it stays at an assisted living facility or as a memory loss center, and that it not be used for other instances such as substance abuse, which nursing homes often do, to keep their census ratings up. So I would suggest to the City Council to also look at restricted use for the facility itself. Other than that, that's all I have to say, and if anybody has any questions, you can always ask me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? This is a public hearing. If you'd like to speak on SE-03-17, now would be the time. Make your way to the podium, please. Anybody like to speak? Stand up, please.
Rachel, is it possible to ask the applicant a question?
Sure. You want to do it right now? Yes. Applicant, you have a question.
I'd like to ask a quick question of the applicant. This facility is going to be a memory care unit. Is this going to be an end-of-life facility, or are you... Do they have to move on to a nursing home at some point?
They would if they required nursing. We are not a skilled nursing facility. We are assisted living with directed and supervisory care. So a person would say, on event, they would have to go to a nursing skilled center.
Okay. And I also had one of the people that live in my district ask a question. Are spouses going to be permitted to live in this facility with their spouse who has the problem?
Yes, they will. We have four units specifically that will allow for double occupancy.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? And this is a public hearing with the last call. If you'd like to speak on SE-03-17, this is your last chance to run over there to that podium. Okay, I see none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. I would just like to say, great job in working with the community and explaining what it's all about. And I'd just like to clarify, on the special exception application, the proposed use is memory care facility. So if anything were to change, they would have to come back and reopen the special exception. Is that correct?
They would need to come back and amend the special exception. Correct.
Right. So if the use changed, there would have to be an amendment, a public hearing on anything other than a memory care facility.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Lynn?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
I want to, because this is a quasi-judicial public hearing, let you know that I have met with the developer on numerous occasions, along with the Burnt Store Isles Association officers from the very beginning, when they thought that they were going to consider this property. And we had a previous developer was cited that wanted to put apartments there, which the residents were vehemently opposed to because of the impact on traffic. And traffic on Tripoli and Madrid is a big concern. And this solution is probably the least traffic impact of anything we can think of. So it really does fit well, and the developer has been bent over backwards to work with the community. It's just been awesome. So I think it will be great, and I would certainly move that we approve.
I'll second... If that's your motion, I'll second that. I think that this is an excellent example of community collaboration, and everybody came together, worked together, worked out all the glitches and the bugs before it was presented to City Council. I wish that the one we had last week had done the same, because we would have had a lot less disputing. But I think this is going to be an excellent contribution to the community. And thanks to the Burnt Store Isles folks who have all banded together and worked together to try to make this happen as well. So I second your motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have SV-02-17.
Yes, and a couple of brief remarks. First of all, I'm going to read this resolution by title only, but we discovered that from the time... Well, we discovered that there was a couple of Scrivener's errors in the resolution as it was originally published. And let me just say, as a general proposition with respect to titles to ordinances or resolutions, you're allowed to subtract from the title certain items without the necessity of re-advertising. It is only when you start adding things into them of a substantive nature which requires a re-advertising. So in this case, we subtracted some words, and the only words that we added were not substantive in nature. Secondly, as I indicated a little bit earlier, the opening and closing of portions of streets is a legislative function of the City Council, not a quasi-judicial one, and is clearly within your discretion in matters of this nature, whereas quasi-judicial decisions are made based on consideration of specific criteria. So like I said, there may be some minor ordinance changes in the offing as it relates to the process, but again, this is a legislative discretionary action.
So how are we going to treat it today? As a quasi-judicial?
No, we're not going to treat it as quasi-judicial. We're going to treat it as a discretionary legislative action. A determination on your behalf as to whether or not you believe that this vacation is in the best interest of the city, as you see it.
And then where do we take the public comment on this item?
You can take the public comment as we...
After you read it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Presentation by staff, public comment, and then you make a determination as to what you think is in the best interest of the city.
Okay.
All right? So this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, vacating portion of a 10-foot-wide east-west direction alley as illustrated on Harvey subdivision of Block 30 containing 887.5 square feet, and a portion of a 10-foot-wide east-west direction alley as illustrated on Harvey subdivision of Block 30 containing 72.5 square feet, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached heretofore and made a part thereof and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. Lisa Han, an interim zoning official for the record. I'd like to enter the brief staff report into the record by reference. This is just a request by the applicant to clear title. They do own... She does own lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, and there are currently structures that are in the alley. And staff does recommend approval, and Planning Commission recommended approval of SV-02-17.
Can we get the... Zoom out so we can see where the lots 3, 4... Any questions for staff? Okay. If you'd like to speak on SV-02-17, you could do so at this time at this podium. You do not need to be sworn.
Correct.
If anybody would like to speak on SV-02-17, please take the podium. You have three minutes. State your name.
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Thomas, and I own the properties on all sides, and I simply want to have it vacated because of a future sale, so it wouldn't hinder that or give me clear title of it. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on SV-02-17? I will entertain motions or...
I so move that we accept SV-02-17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve SV-02-17. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda, and we have one item, which is an invoice. If anybody would like to speak on that one item, now would be the time. Anybody to speak on the consent agenda? Seeing none.
Move to approve consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. We've had a request to listen to number 10, the event permit for the block party. Would that be amenable to all of y'all?
That'd be fine.
We have some people that are in the audience that would need to get to an appointment, I believe. So is everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to hear new business, number 10, right? X is 10.
Yes.
My Roman numerals. I need to brush up on those. Which is the event permit for the Punta Gorda block party, April 28, 2018, downtown Punta Gorda. Make sure you give the clerk a copy, too. Thank you.
I'm Gussie Baker, here for the block party, and this is Martha McKenzie, another member of our board. And we are passing you out something that some of you know and some of you don't know. So we thought maybe it might be a good idea when you all have some spare time to read it, and you can find out that it's not just a block party, that we've done a lot of other things to help the city. And we appreciate all that you have done, and we're ready to do it again.
Thank you.
Staff has just brought this before council as requested, and Councilmember Matthews does have a debriefing that was attached to the agenda item, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Yes, I'll just offer a couple of things. The block party committee met with city staff and myself on May 19, and we reviewed all of the good bad and the indifferent to this year's block party. I presented to the City Council a complete review of what happened at that meeting and what was decided moving forward. It was my very strong suggestion that they apply early...
Sorry. That was my bad.
It was my very strong suggestion that they apply early for next year's event so that adequate time and planning can go into all of what has to happen. They have to get permits. They have to get traffic control under, you know, under better control from this year. There are several things that they want to do different and better for next year. I've also gone around and I've met with numerous property and business owners on the Marion Corridor and spoke with them. I put all of those comments in my review for the council members. It is my opinion that I think we should continue with the block party. I think they have made very sincere efforts to work with the city and try to make this amenable to most. We're never going to please all of the business owners. There are still those business owners that are very adamantly opposed to this event. However, for the most part, everyone I spoke with said that the crowd this year was much more upscale, much more well-behaved, and that they felt that overall it was a good event for the city. I think that everybody on the block party committee is dedicated to making it the best they can make it for next year. So it would be my recommendation that we approve the permit request.
Thank you.
We heard a lot from the business community this past year, and I know that you did get some... You did talk to the business community. I know there's some probably holdouts that are not in favor of this, but the recommendation is to go forward. Have you heard... Have you talked to any of these people and got them to...
Yes. Yes. I spoke with several business owners on the corridor, and most were in favor of going forward with it again. I would like to recommend that the committee make sure that a formal letter is sent to every business owner on that corridor as soon as possible, giving them the details, the day and the times and so forth for next year, so that adequate time and planning can be folded into this. We had one business owner that was extremely upset at the very last minute because they had planned to be open. The committee had tried to work with them, and it just didn't work out. Their clientele decided that they didn't want to play with the traffic situation and so forth. So I think if you can prepare a letter, which is supposed to be included in the permit application anyway, but I think the letter should be prepared, and you can either hand-deliver it and speak to the business owners, or you can mail it to the business owners and...
Well, we do that. Every year, we go to each business owner and talk to them and give them all the street closings, any information that we have. We feel they need to know that we give them that. And this year, it's even going to be easier because of us being able to do it sooner. And I think that'll be helpful if they know it sooner than the last couple of weeks. And I'm really excited because we have some business owners that are going to be on the committee now. And I feel real good about that.
Nancy?
And a couple other comments, maybe just suggestions. As you know, Gussie, your brother, Vernon Peoples, used to talk about 50% of our population turning over every eight years.
Yes, he did.
And so we have a lot of new residents in this community that really have no idea what the genesis of the block party is at all. And I think this document that you handed us today would be great material for something that might... Jonathan might want to put in the Charlotte Sun and work with you on an article about that, as well as you might want to consider the name of the block party, also incorporate in their nonprofit something, a fundraiser for local nonprofits or whatever, but try to help educate our community about...
Well, it is. It is true that we've done an awful lot for this community that people don't know about. And I was standing over there by Johnny's fiance, and while he was talking this morning, and Johnny Lloyd was the employee that came to the... Came to us and asked us would we start feeding people on Saturday? And we did. We cooked for them for over a year until we got the Love of Kids started, and now the Love of Kids is still going. So there's a lot of things that we've done, such as start the Historical Society, and we've started several things. And I think the best thing we've done, this committee, is we're Punta Gorda, and we still are the county seat because the county commission wanted to take it away from us. So the mayor at that time asked us if we would help them do what needed to be done. So we all got out there and signed petitions, had people sign petitions, go to every county commission meeting for a year, and guess what? We're still the county seat.
Gary?
I just want to comment that we had a difficult start last year, and I came out with a very good friend in Gussie. I've gotten to know her a lot in this last year, and as much as she's talking now, she's still understating everything that this block party and her group have been able to do for Punta Gorda. So I commend the work that the committee did and Lynn's involvement in that so that we can get this preemptively done, get this done without having to deal with the 11th hour, because I think it's a great group. It's a... And the history behind it is just really fabulous, and I think we should just do everything we can to support them to go onward and upward, because they've certainly given a lot back to the community. And I want to thank you personally, Gussie.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Question? Gussie, do you have an idea, Gussie, of what... How much money the committee made this year for nonprofits in the community?
We don't ask them to give us a number that they made, because most of them don't want to, because they're so proud of how much they make. I can tell you that what I know, because I talk to them individually, I know that one group from the high school made $5,000 for their group, and that gave them the money to send kids that can't afford it to go to the sports camp, that they needed help, and that's what they did with that money. And a lot of people don't know, but to be in the band now at Charlotte High School, you have to pay $250 just to be in it. To play sports, you have to pay $250, because the budgets have been cut so bad for the schools, they don't have the money. So that's what those school kids are out there doing, raising the money to pay for their... Being able to join and being a part of those things, extracurricular things.
And for the purposes of the people sitting here listening today, you did not charge an admittance fee this year?
No.
But you collected money in a voluntary bucket at the entrance gates?
Yes, we did, and we collected $18,000.
All of that money gets donated to nonprofits in the community.
All of it.
So kudos to you guys, and look forward to next year and beyond.
Yep. Thank you.
So I skipped over citizens' comments. So if anybody would like to speak on the block party, just this item, because we took it out of order, now would be the time, so I'm going to allow them to come to that podium. If anybody would like to speak on the block party event permit? Any public comments, citizens' comments on block party? I don't think she's going to let you get to the microphone, so...
I would let you.
Just kidding. Seeing none, then we'll entertain a motion.
With great pride, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the permit for next year's block party.
I second. Gary?
That's right. Two seconds. All right. Motion and two seconds to approve the event permit for the block party, April 28, 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much. We'll make you proud.
Thanks.
Thank you, Gussie.
Sure you will.
Okay. Now would be the time to comment on regular agenda items, which includes the contract with Playmore to build the Gilchrist Park Playground, the appropriation for contingent legal services, the employee security plan, the proposed millage rate, the purchase of four refuse trucks, the millage rates for... Or the levees for the BSI canal maintenance, the PGI canal maintenance. Or do we take those... We take those separately? So it's just... Or should... Do we have to open this as a public hearing?
The... Each of those others would be separate, because you'll be adjourning as the City Council on opening the district.
Okay. So how about this? Because then, look, we have... We'll take citizens' comments again after lot mowing for the unfinished business?
Yes.
And the new business? And the change order? Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay. So what we're going to do is, right now, we're going to take citizens' comments on five budget items. We're going to take citizens' comments on the Gilchrist Park Playground, the contingent legal services, the employee security plan, the resolution, and the change order for Tetra Tech. Now would be the time to comment on those items. Anybody like to speak on those particular items? Okay. Then we're going to move into budget.
First item is to allow the city manager, while you're on recess, to sign the agreement with the playground vendor, so we can get that project up and running rather than wait until August 23.
Do you need to read the resolution?
I'm just looking to see which one we're talking about.
5A.
5A.
5A. I may have the pre-amended agenda.
It's still the same.
It's still the same. It did change.
Okay. All right. All right. This is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, approving the issuance of a purchase order and/or agreement with Playmore recreational products and services for construction of the Gilchrist Park Playground, not to exceed the approved fiscal year 2017 of $500,000, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and providing an effective date.
Questions? Motions?
Well, I think we've discussed this playground a lot, so I think, based on that, I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. Next, we have appropriation of contingent legal services.
Second item is, during this past fiscal year, we've had some legal issues that have come before us, that we need to transfer $20,000 more into the legal budget to complete the fiscal year, and issues such as the Nolton incident, the Fishville incident, the...
Incident? Fishville sale?
Sale. Fishville sale and the legal challenge. It's an incident. Anyways, we need to put $20,000 more. That's our estimate.
Lynn?
Are we going to be covered if we keep the annual amount at $150,000 for next year's budget?
Our paralegal will address that.
Normally, I think we're under, usually.
Normally, we are.
I can go paralegal for the record. Um, yeah, our... We have been... The legal budget, we have reduced it from $175,000 a year, going back down to $150,000. Next year, we have put that $25,000 back in, in case some of these issues span over October 1st. So we increased it to $175,000. And that these services are not just city attorney. That account does the board and committee attorneys and the labor attorney as well.
I make a motion to approve.
And pension, if we have any pension, which we didn't have this year.
Excuse me. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the appropriation. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. Next, we have the employee security plan.
Yes. Our HR manager's coming up, and what you have is the results of a staff committee. We're not asking for $135,000 to be appropriated today, but we will be coming up with a plan over a two-to-three-to-four-year phase-in, maybe two years, maybe three years, and we will come back to you with what we feel is appropriate for year one before you adopt your budget. your budget. Would you like to explain some of the items, not every single one?
Oh, please.
I mean, I think they're pretty self-explanatory, and I know you guys put together a group of employees to come up with options. I'd say the sooner the better.
Yep.
The only question I have, and I respect the employees, and certainly feel we want to create a safe environment for the employees to conduct the business of the city. Is there a security expert that would also recommend certain things? Is there a way to validate some of these things that, there might be things that we, as actual laypeople that are, you know, performing a function for the city, might not be aware of that we should be considering, so that...
Well, we had some members of the police department who have security backgrounds on the committee. Would you like to...
Good morning. I'm Phil Wickstrom, for the record, HR manager. You all are aware of the circumstances that led to this particular working group. We, essentially, we have two pieces going on here. One is a physical impact to the buildings, some dividers in walls and doors and things like that. That is the cheaper piece. The electronic component will be more expensive. And the electronic component, as we do some pieces of the physical restructuring, we'll need to do the electronic component because it just makes sense. Some ones that we would like to hit immediately would be changing the doors that lead into procurement and HR, and the doors to the city manager's suite, and, didn't you like that, the suite? The city manager's suite, and the urban design area. And replacing those doors with glass doors with a release of some kind to get in, and you would have, we're looking at card, at key cards to swipe in and out. I've never worked in a place that had this type of a building where we didn't have to register our presence. But anyway, the key card thing is not inexpensive, and that's why I'm saying that's more expensive. But if we do the two doors on the second, two doors on the third, then we would need to, we would need to do that at the same time because we're going to have the frame out and the whole thing. When we first got together, there was a thought that, well, are we overreacting to And to answer the question, that's not a yes or no. It just takes one. I have a, I have a city manager that says that occasionally. And we, it just, it's a difficult thing to deal with. If you go up to Northport, they have an incredibly secure building. If you go to PD, they have, the PD side has great security, the fireside does not. And so what we are trying to do is come up with a common sense approach. You ask the question directly, should we bring in a consultant? What would happen were you to approve us moving forward? And the city manager said a phased approach, which is what we want to do. I think it would be a good idea, and I've talked with the procurement manager, to bring in someone who, we don't want to disqualify them from bidding, but someone to come in and walk through and look at our list and say, "Yeah, I don't think you need to do this." You probably want to look at that, and, because we went very conservative, and by that, by conservative, I mean, we didn't want to go with fortress city hall annex, but at the same time, we didn't want to leave our employees with the impression we don't care.
Absolutely.
That, yes, bringing in someone with that expertise, because we're saying the glass doors with buzzers, and he, he, she, it could say, "I really don't see that as being necessary. Let's look at this."
Right.
So, that will be part of that process.
Okay.
And in the past, I've heard, I wasn't here at the time, that the third floor was quite secure with plexiglass and, so it has evolved over time. There were, there were barriers in place, and I think that, you know, when you do go up there and look at the solid wood doors with, you can't really close those. So just to have something between would at least help, I think.
We're, as I said yesterday, with one of the media folks, we're trying to reach a happy medium, and that is, we want to keep our public buildings inviting. We want people to be able to come into our public buildings, do their business, but not feel they're coming to Fort Knox where they have to sign their life away to get in. We want it to be inviting, and at the same time, we need to make sure our employees are working in a safe environment. So there are some changes we need to make.
Gary?
I just want to address this briefly, a comment that Howard made about our police department and having expertise in that security area. I'm involved with a religious organization that similar organizations, both north and south of us, have had vandalism, and we asked, and they provided a service for us, the Puntagorda Police Department, and it's my understanding that they are actually certified in security issues, and they did an excellent job for us. And they gave us a list of, you know, was the 50, 60, 80, what we could, the low live fruit, including things like where we moved, had bushes, moved, we moved a couple bushes and so forth. So we do have that expertise inside. I certainly would encourage us to get a, some expertise from outside, but not necessarily on a formal level, just because it's another set of eyes and another set of ears, but we do have that expertise in our, in our police department. It's excellent, I believe.
Marty Meadow was on our working group. Marty is one of the detectives, very knowledgeable. We can go to extremes, trust me.
I know.
But we, the city manager's correct, we have a reputation as an open city, as a, as a friend, you know, we try to make our services friendly, and we're trying to strike that balance. One of the areas that will be quite expensive is going to be in the area of cameras, and that, it's just, yes, the technology is there, but at the same time, but we're, what, what I, what we would like to do is, if you say move forward and bring us a plan that says, "This is when we want to do this, this is when we want to do that," I can bring that back to you when you come back from break, and we'll meet with the working group again and actually flesh this out a little more than what you have now.
Sounds good. I'm in support.
I think it's money well spent, and certainly, we want to be proactive rather than reactive. If anything were to happen, it would be horrible, and let's not let that happen. Let's, let's be progressive and get this taken care of so that we have safety for and security for our employees. So how do you want us to move with this?
Consensus, or do you want a motion?
No, we're fine.
We're fine?
Fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You kept it semi-short.
Semi. The next item, would you like to have our acting controller give a full-blown present update on the budget, and so we can adopt a resolution on the proposed millage rate?
Yeah.
Before she does that, let me go ahead and read the resolution by title only, please.
Thank you.
A resolution of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, adopting a proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2017, 2018, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider final adoption of the millage rate and providing an effective date.
Kristin Simeon with Finance. Thank you. We are proposing that the, maintain the millage rate of 3.1969. This balances the fiscal year 18 budget with use of reserves. It continues the paving program and the drainage program, and maintains the service levels with an additional .5 FTE staff that was approved. This is just a quick little slide showing what we have our funding levels at for paving and drainage as approved. And this slide also gives you, for a homestead residence at 150,000 and 300,000, what the, maintaining the millage rate would look like if you were comparing it to fiscal year 17. Any questions on that?
Can you just, can you just activate the inflation as far as you...
Okay. For this year, homestead can go up 2.1 percent as the maximum for the Consumer Price Index. Any questions?
Any other questions?
No. Do we recommend approval?
Yes, I mean, keeping the millage rate, that, this is the not to exceed, we could, we could always consider something else, but adding the drainage program in, it certainly makes sense. We did not go the stormwater fee, we did not go to the fee model, so it's justified.
Yeah, just a comment, I think, some things have been bothering me over, and I think it's because I look back and I think, you know, every year, I've, I've made this comment, and I continue to maintain, that our budget process looks, starts and says, "Oh, this is what our projected property values are going to be, so here's the pocket, how are we going to spend it?" And it's like, that to me is an inverse of how I think business would establish budgets, and we would look at it from, you know, a baseline and, and project where do we need certain things and how do we adjust before, before we would start to establish a millage rate in it. And then we get this increase in property values beyond what we expected, and it's like, oh, we've got more money to spend. And so I feel like, you know, it's almost like, are we really being judicious and using the taxpayers' money? Are we really being as conservative as we could be? And it's just the, you know, I think it's, at this point in time, we've gone through this, and we've really had lots of good discussions. I just felt like I, I needed to be able to, to say that I think that, I just felt we, maybe, as property values continue to increase, we're going to need to be more conservative about how we go about looking at this, and are we at a point where we need to start looking at lowering our millage rate rather than increasing it? So we're keeping it here. Just, just a comment.
But we've also made decisions to match revenues with expenditures and to really stop the use of the reserves that we've done for years and years and years, and really, what does it cost to run the city? You don't, you don't hear anybody complaining about their roads or their drainage, I mean, because we're taking care of what they've told us that they, they want taken care of. So, I mean, I feel it's justified, and that's really the, the direction we've tried to go in these last few years, is to stabilize.
I mean, one thing, I mean, our residents like to have reliable services, and I think that we have to plan in a manner in which we have adequate means for that, and I think this is a very appropriate way. One thing, again, we cannot forget is that next year, there's going to be a state referendum for homestead exemption, and we will be hit by that. And so for us, I think it'd be irresponsible for us to lower the millage rate, knowing that the city's going to have money taken from it by the state.
I'm not suggesting that this year is this year. I'm just making a comment as the way we go about the budget and, and looking at it. I realize we've added some things in, and people have asked us to. They, they've asked us to please include the drainage, and we've talked about, you know, thatch and how we could avoid it, and we've all come to the conclusion...
Let's not get in the weeds.
So it's just, I guess it's a philosophy. It's a budgeting philosophy, so...
Any other comments? We need motions? Gary?
I just want to reiterate, I think that staff should be complimented as well as, I guess, ourselves and the, and previous councils. When you look at what the millage rates have been in the past, there has been a reduction in millage rate, a significant reduction in millage rate from the past. We've held this millage rate, now is this, is this going to be the fifth year?
Yeah.
That we've held it after having to have a large increase. And we've added things into it, and plus, we're a community, we've got, we're going to have twice-a-week garbage collection, we're going to have Class A roads, we've made a commitment to do that on Class Bs, and we're not going to accept Ds and Es, and we've had some very spirited discussions about that. We've put on our community, and our communities put on us, certain criteria that we need to meet, and I think that by being able to maintain the millage rate with the increases, I think that we're showing very prudent and proper going forward. And there's going to be greater pressures in the future for us to try to increase it, and I think that we're just going to have to deal with those as we go, but I think we're doing a great job right now.
We need a motion.
On resolution? Did you read the resolution?
And the motion should include the 3.1969.
I so move that we accept the millage rate of 3.1969. For advertising purposes.
So we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we have the purchase order for four Mac McNeelys 25CY refuse trucks from Steel Truck Center.
We do, we are not recommending the low bidder. We are recommending the second bidder, and you have justification from staff. They are here to address any of your questions. But based on the staff's recommendation that the second bidder has much more cost-efficient proposal, bid, that is our recommendation.
And I think too, you know, for the health and safety of our employees is very important too. There's, you know, a cost associated with that. So if this is the recommendation and they've done the research, I'm okay with it. Lynn?
I would just like to commend the staff on all of the research they did do on this project because there is extensive information in our package about this, and it took quite a lot of time and effort to go into the logistics of which equipment was going to have better long-term durability, what, which equipment was safer and so on. And thank you to the staff for doing that because it does make a difference in this case. We are not recommending the lowest bidder because of that, so it's a, it's a very good thing. Thank you.
Yeah, staff did their homework very well. Thank you. It made it very easy for us to...
Yes.
To approve, so...
I won't lose sleep spending more money on this particular item.
I move to approve.
I second.
Motion second to approve the purchase. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And next, we have approval of a change order.
Yes, this change order is a result of the extension of the deep injection well construction that we dealt with at a prior council, council meeting because of unforeseen circumstances. So we have to have our inspectors from Tetra Tech on site, and one goes hand in hand with the other. We will be meeting with Tetra Tech next week on other issues, not related to this.
Questions? Tom, Tom's here available if you have any questions.
Move approval of the change order.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the change order. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
It is 10:51. We are going to take a nine-minute break.